I was here for the zoning, I guess I'm gonna have to walk down the hall.
Yeah, yes.
Unless you guys get wraps up. See you later, Tom.
Everybody please rise for that pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's special meeting of the Lowell School Committee, will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Lay?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Nutter?
Here.
Ms. Samaras?
Here.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Ms. Dougherty?
Here.
Mr. Hoey?
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. At this special meeting, the first part of this special meeting is the subcommittee report, or the personnel subcommittee report, of the approval of the minutes of the meeting of Wednesday, February 20th, 2019. Ms. Martin, you were the chair, could you please?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So the subcommittee did meet last week on Wednesday. Present were members of the subcommittee, myself, Ms. Dougherty, and Mr. Hoey. Also present were Mr. Lay, Mr. Nutter, and Mr. Dakota. We basically had gone through, in that personnel subcommittee, some of the questions about how we're gonna proceed with our superintendent's search. I'll honestly say, we had, we talked about a number of different things, all of which need to be confirmed by the full committee this evening. So I think as we go through, the topics that we discussed were the contract with the Mass Association of School Committees, the revised, some revisions to the job posting, populating the Blue Ribbon Screening Committee, setting the timeline. We also did talk briefly about the Human Resources Director position, approving some of that job description, and some of the recommendations from the consultant that we're working with. Again, every item needs to be part of a motion moving forward this evening, so the full committee can make any adjustments or changes they wish, and then we'll make our final votes tonight collectively. So I'd submit that just, that as a report of progress, and we can kinda get into the meat of it.
A second for that report. Hi, Mr. Dakota, thank you. I believe you had two motions from that, you wished to direct to the... You wanna, uh, the two motions. The first is to establish a salary range for the superintendent's position. You wanted to discuss that?
So that would be, we had determined at the subcommittee that we'd bring that forward this evening for the full committee to discuss. I believe the, did we have a listing of the current salary, as it exists?
Um, the current salary was $199,000.
Okay. So then it would be up to this committee to come up with a range that we'd like to put forward in all of our advertising. Someone has a recommendation?
All right. Ms. Dougherty?
I wonder if, have we given any thought to just saying a competitive salary, as opposed to actually giving a range? I know that's not typically what we've done in the past, but in my experience, I work for a recruiting consulting firm, it's not education-related roles, but most of our positions will say competitive. I just didn't know if that was something people were open to thinking about, or, just wanted to throw that out there.
Other, any other? Mr. Hoey?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I just feel that the salary range is something we should be discussing, because I believe when you look around other cities like Chansfield and Tuxbury, and all the cities, I think for the size of our system, and how, how many state laws we have to follow in special ed, and, it's just an incredible system to be paying someone under $200,000. You're not gonna attract many people for under $200,000 to the city of Lowell. In my opinion, we should probably be upwards of 215 to 225. So that's all I wanna say on that subject. Thank you.
And, Ms. Martin?
Um, I, I'm not uncomfortable with that range, but I, and I do actually, to Ms. Dougherty's point, I understand the, kinda the salary commensurate with experience, but I do think in this industry, in this world, it is typical that you would set a salary, a salary range. And I, I think it's just, I think our ability to kind of put that information out there clearly, so that applicants know exactly what the, you know, what the deal is, I think would be more, I would prefer to do that, at this point. And as, if Mr. Hoey wants to make his range as a motion, I'd be, we could...
No, I believe you're correct. I mean, we are the fourth largest city in the Commonwealth, and there is expectation. This is not a simple job to come into, and so I, competitive, it's Dougherty, I understand what you're saying, but it really doesn't deliver. We have to deliver a punch. I mean, are we serious about this or not? Now, Mr. Hoey, you made a, do you wanna make that as a?
Yeah, so moved. I'd like to make a motion that we set the range between 215,000 and 225,000.
You wanna go that, that high in the range?
Yes.
I mean, the range could, you could go low.
I would like, I think, I think that's what we have to really attract, and we're gonna be talking about HR pretty soon, I have some more comments about that. But I think, when, when people look at a city like Lowell, and the way we've been, it's just Lowell, I love Lowell, it's a great city, and I know we're gonna do great things in the next year, I just think we have to do something different. And I remember the city, city council mayor, they were really trying to make sure the city manager was making more than the superintendent of schools at that time, and I think she does make about $800, don't hold me to every dollar, but I think around 800, more than the superintendent of schools. Well, I'm sorry, to me, the superintendent of schools in this city is worth more than that, and that's why I wanna stick to that range. Thank you, though.
I understand, but I don't think it was a battle to whose salary is higher. I think the issue is both positions are very difficult, and both decisions, positions are demanding and require a competitive salary. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can we, I don't have a problem with the 225 as the top, but could we just expand that back down to the lower side, to say, from 210 instead, or, just 'cause otherwise, you're only talking a $10,000 range. I think if we can broaden that somewhat, to maybe even say 205,000 to 225,000, I think that gives us a broader space to negotiate, as it were.
I, I think what you brought up was a silly in point. I mean, it's all about negotiating, negotiating, Mr. Hoey. I understand what you're saying, and you're correct, we have to be competitive. At the same time, we have to have the ability to negotiate. Any other comments, anybody regarding the range? Mr. Nutter?
If, if Mr. Dakota wants to make that in the form of a motion, I would second it.
I would like to pretend that has a motion, to expand that.
There's a motion, there was a motion on the floor, but the...
From the...
No, actually, we need, we need the motion to establish the superintendent's salary, then the motion to create the superintendent's salary. So I needed a motion to establish the salary range for the superintendent's position. Seconded by Mr. Martin, seconded by Mr. Nutter. Roll call.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Ms. Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Your motion now, Mr. Dakota?
Well, do I have to make it as an amendment to his?
It's just a motion.
Okay, so I think we should make the range of salary offer to be 205,000 to 220, to 225,000. That gives us a really $20,000 leeway, and I think that would be good, so that's my motion.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Nutter said he would second it. Mr. Hoey?
Can I speak on it, though?
Yes.
Andy, as long as you're over 200,000, I think that is a good motion. I say 215, because I've been trying to study it, and listening to Mr. Kuchar, and listening to everybody that I think has knowledge on this. I really do think that money's a big factor.
Sure.
When you're trying to attract the best. But with that said, I'm gonna support your motion, I will. It's not that much of a drop. Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Mr. Hoey. All in favor, uh, roll call.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Ms. Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
All right. The next motion you had, under discussion, was to extend the salary range, change the job title to Chief Human Resource Officer, and change the reporting structure of the new position of Human Resource Person. I need a mo, I need a motion to, except... Pardon?
Do we have to do those individually?
Pro, you don't have to, but I think we should.
Okay.
I think it should be discussed. Why don't we, this openness for discussion, then, I'll need a motion to accept. Well, let's get the motion to put this on the floor, so, you made the motion to, did I read this correctly, from your?
Could you re-read it, I'm sorry?
Okay. To extend the salary range, change the job title to Chief Human Resource Officer, and change the reporting structure of the Chief Human Resource Officer, basically the reporting structure, as to who he or she would report to.
So the, the change, as we had discussed it at the meeting, the salary change first off, was to move from, uh, the range was 95,000, and to, to increase the range to 125,000? So I don't know if that would want, if we would wanna, I guess I could make it in the form of a motion to me, or our previous one, 105 to 125?
All right, why don't we make the motion?
Is that?
The motion to have all of this...
I'm sorry, Ms. Turner has a question? Or correction?
Let's, let's go back to, I, I need a vote to accept this, that we'll now work on this issue.
Okay.
Uh, roll call? I'm sorry, I need a second on this. I need a second for us to go...
I'll give you a second, Mayor.
Okay.
What, what are we voting on?
Just to have the conversation.
Voting to discuss the role of the Human Resource Officer.
Okay.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Ms. Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Now, let's take each portion of...
So Ms. Turner had something to?
Yes.
At the meeting we had last week, we decided, well, we agreed to keep the lower end of the range, and increase the higher end to 125, so that we have flexibility. So the range was going to be 95 to 125, and, and, someone requested that we investigate other districts, not just Worcester and Boston, and the salaries ranged from 75,000 to 125,000, so I think that the range we're offering would be comparative to the surrounding districts.
So then, my initial motion of establishing a range from 95 to 125, as the range that we'd publish for the, for the, I'm gonna call it HR Director for right now, and then we'll vote on the title change after.
Seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Roll call?
Uh, Mayor, can I speak on that? Thank you. I don't wanna go back too far in history, but when we wanna change the name of the HR office, I feel the last time, in my opinion, when I was on the school committee in 1995, we had a, what I call a Deputy Superintendent of HR, her name was Dr. Helen Flanagan, and at the time, it was, I don't think there was a system running any better. It was running on all cylinders. So that's all I'm gonna say on that issue, but I don't, I don't believe it should be any less of a description. I think the Deputy Superintendent of HR is equal to any one of my deputies. I think that's how important that job is. I believe we're gonna run into some finance problems, obviously, because some people might be getting paid more than others, but to attract the HR Director that this city needs, to cover the almost 3,000 pensions, and the pressure that's put on anybody that works in the HR, is incredible. And what we need is an HR with a backbone, that gets paid for the job right, that can come straight to the superintendent, doesn't deal with anybody else, only directly to the superintendent, and I think if we go with this lower price of person, that's what you're gonna get. You're gonna get somebody that, not that it's bad either, don't get me wrong, because we were paying one HR person about 92 to 95,000, when he first got elected three years ago, and that person hired 219 teachers and paraprofessionals over one summer. She also worked in a hostile environment that people were trying to hurt her. She's no longer there, but that's what, she worked really hard for the 95,000, so you can get some pretty good people at that price. But to get someone to run this system, and to straighten it out, once and for all, I think it should be a Deputy of Superintendent of HR, and they should be paid the same as Ms. Turner, Ms. Desmond, or Ms. Durkin. Our team, our team, I'm very happy with our team, other than we don't have a superintendent right now, and I wouldn't really even care if we waited a year for a superintendent, 'cause I know if this team gets together, and they're not fighting with each other, they'll do fine for us. No, that's how I feel. That's how I feel. Even though we're missing a superintendent. All right.
For the record, we have a superintendent.
I don't know how many minutes I got, but you could cut me off now. I just want my colleagues to hear me, right now, this is the biggest issue, in my opinion in the city. Bigger than the superintendent, how's that? That's how I feel. Thank you very much for the time.
Discussion on this, on, Mr. Hoey, here's the problem, with, if you change it to Assistant Superintendent of Personnel, it now limits the applicants, the pool, they would have to be certified as superintendents of schools. And I think what you're doing is, you're, you're boxing us in to a very limited group of people, whereas this position here, you can be, have superintendent certification, but you also can be very well-developed in the, in the area of recruitment and hiring. And we're looking for a professional, that's, so titles mean something different. Mr. Dakota, for?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, we can kind of go there with you on this, Bob, if we just put it in the job description with that title, and not have the restrictions of having, you know, a deputy, having all that certification, minimizing who we could possibly get.
If you make the title Assistant Superintendent, you need, you need the certification.
I, no, no, but keep, keep the title that we, but just in the job description, and what the responsibilities are, and how, how they're dealt with, being directly, you know, I think we, it can still...
Well, that's germane to any, any issue. I mean, it's, it's what are you responsible for?
Mm-hmm.
You can have any title, you know, under the sun.
Right.
But it, in order for it to work, you have to have the certification, certifications necessary, and a job description that meets the needs of the community. Mr. Hoey?
I didn't wanna get deep into the history, but you remember when you run for superintendent, who you, you and Dr. Flanagan were running together, correct? Remember at that time? And I think you can remember Dr. Helen Flanagan, and what type of job she was doing for the city of Lowell, correct?
No.
And I don't think, Mayor, I don't think it was Assistant Superintendent, I think it was Deputy.
No, no, I'm just using the term.
Right. And I'm only trying to give you my opinion, that I think it's equal to almost any job in this, in the school system. It's that important, it's why we've been fighting for years, it's why school committees don't get along, it's just the way it is. And it's something that you gotta pay to get someone that's gonna be great at that job.
Mr. Hoey, I'm not disputing you.
Okay.
I'm just stating, that if we, if you change the title to Assistant Superintendent of Schools, it limits your field. It's now those people who are Assistant Superintendents, or have certification to be an Assistant Superintendent in other school systems. But the thing is, what I thought what you were looking for, was somebody that was well-bursted in recruitment, hiring procedures, those type of things. I, no question, this job is very important, we know that. And I'm just saying, do you wanna limit yourself? Any other discussion on this matter? Ms. Ma?
So if I could, just, the, the first topic that we're discussing right now is the salary, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, then, from the meeting, I would make the recommendation that we establish the salary range from 95,000 to 125,000.
I need a second on that, Mr. Dakota? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Dougherty, I'm sorry, Ms. Dougherty was in the... It's been a while, so I gotta play catch-up here. Okay, we have this on the floor. I need a roll call.
Mr. Lay?
I'm sorry, Mr. Lay, do you?
May I go back to the job title one minute? Oh, okay, oh, okay, I'll wait then.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Ms. Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
No.
Six yeas, one nay, approved.
Next aspect of it, Ms. Martin?
So the next topic would be the title change, changing it to the Chief Human Resource Officer.
I need a second for that? Ms. Dougherty? Discussion?
So...
Okay. Roll call? I'm sorry, Mr. Lay.
Actually, the, the job title and the salary kind of goes hand in hands, but I am learning something new today, that Mr., what Mr. Hoey just said, and you, Mr. Mayor, regarding the, limiting the field. But, um, and, I'm looking, start looking at Superintendent Durkin, she, as a superintendent, what do you think? I, I just want to hear from, from you, to you, Mr. Mayor, see if you could shed some light, what do you think the job title should be, and, and what do you think if we make her that position as a Assistant Superintendent?
I don't think the position needs to be an Assistant Superintendent position to get a really qualified person. I think I agree with other members of the committee, that you may limit yourself because of that certification. So you could get someone, you know, in that range, and I know that because we've been parceling out the human resource work, there's, there's a lot of work to be had. And what I do know, is that we need to make a decision this evening, so that we can post this position, and get a qualified candidate in place as soon as possible. So I, I really don't think the position needs to be an Assistant Superintendent to get a highly qualified human resource person. And we've, Billy Joe Turner has looked at a number of these different positions across our area, and in the, out in the greater Boston area, and there are many different titles, and not all of them are Assistant Superintendents, most of them are not.
Thank you.
Is that all right, Mr. Lay?
Yes.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Ms. Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
No.
Six yeas, one nay, approved.
Next aspect? The reporting.
I'm sorry. So the, the final topic on this area was shifting the direct report, so that the Chief Human Resource Officer would report directly to the Superintendent of Schools, not the Assistant Superintendent.
Mr. Dougherty?
I think that is a form of a motion.
You second, I'm sorry, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Any questions on the reporting? Mr. Nutter?
I'd just like to, just ask the superintendent what she thinks.
I will, I will certainly defer to the committee, but I have observed firsthand in this position, that the human resource person needs to be able to work hand in hand with finance, because they're not mutually exclusive. If someone reports directly to the superintendent, and they don't fill in the loop with the finance person to determine if, if we have the finances for the particular staffing, all of it plays into the finance area. So whether it be, we're looking at MTRS, whether we're looking at sick leave buyback, all of those, those pieces, I'm not trying to put more work on our finance assistant, but I do believe that that is something to consider. That's just my recommendation.
Mr. Hoey?
Yep, and my opinion again, on, when you work in HR, and getting with the CFO, yes, there's a lot that they have to do together, but the real problem with HR is the almost 3,000 pensions you have, and that's my point. I think, I think a person that's in charge of HR doesn't have to respond to anybody, except the Superintendent of Schools. He has all the power, I think he or she, of who they want to hire. And it causes a lot of grief when that person doesn't have enough power to run that job. We had someone really good, in my opinion, for ninety-five thousand. I think it was ninety-two at the time. But for some reason, we didn't like that person, and I thought they did a great job. So there's still an issue there, as far as I'm concerned, and we're gonna have one for a long time if we don't make sure the HR person just goes directly to the superintendent. Because the CFO's been trying to run jobs, in my opinion, for the last ten to fifteen years. And that's why we have this issue that we're dealing with. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Any other discussion, Mr. Mayor? Mr. Lay?
My two cents of thought is, I agree with Mr. Hoi in that regards, that HR, I feel, that should be independent.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I think for our purposes right now, I do think it makes sense for the chief HR officer to report directly to the superintendent. I think that moving forward, when we have a superintendent in place, that individual will be the one who will make the determination over the course of time. Perhaps the decision will be made to shift it to another area. But I think coming in, you know, we're gonna be, we're gonna have a new HR officer. We're gonna have a new superintendent. I do think that that connection should be direct at the beginning and then give those professionals the opportunity to kind of, if they want to recommend changes, we can entertain them at the time. But I think coming out of the gate, it would make sense to have that as a direct report. And then moving forward, the superintendent would be able to make that choice.
All right. This motion has written was to be a direct report to the superintendent. So have a roll call on this?
Mr. Lay?
By voting yes, that means it goes directly to superintendent?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
No.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Five yeas, one nay, approved.
Okay. Now we go into special audit business. We have two registered speakers, but the, regarding the special audit business, we're dealing with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. And we have, we're talking about drafting the superintendent's job posting, the Blue Ribbon Committee, and draft the focus group timeline and sample survey. We have two registered speakers? Yes, Mr.?
Could I ask you?
Arthur Santos.
Before we do that, could I ask you to get the microphone closer? It's like, I have my hearing aids on eleven, and I still can't hear you.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Eleven? Really, spinal tap?
They probably shut me off. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Always nice for that. All right. We have a registered speaker. Please give your name and address.
Arthur Santos, seventeen Emmett Way, Lowell, Massachusetts. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak here today. I'm just here to speak on behalf of the LSAA. I know there's been discussions about which members would be on the board. And I'm just here to recommend our president of the LSAA, Lindsay Killey. I think she'd be a great person to represent our union where she is the president. I think she's a logical person to pick for, to be on a committee. She hasn't been on a committee before like this, so I know that was another concern that members had here. So I think we should give her the opportunity to represent our union. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another speaker?
Robert DeLosa. Robert DeLosa, forty-seven Hawthorne Road, Kitchiwitz, South Wayland, but more importantly Lowell High School. And I'm speaking to the constituency of the committee. One of the things that I'd like to note is, at least in my mind, there are three major things the superintendent will need to deal with. One of them is the turnaround status of multiple schools. The second is the diversity question. And then the third is overseeing the entry of the high school into its new campus. As a result of that, this committee needs to address an unusual number of different things when searching for the superintendent. And I think it would behoove the committee to have as many leader teachers as possible and administrative leaders as possible who will be dealing with this work. However, I have read what Mr. Kuchar said, and I understand that we can't have ninety people on this committee. So what I'd like to recommend is, oh, and one other thing that I should say is that we also have three very different cultures in our school district. We have the elementary school culture. None of this is homogenous, but the elementary school culture, the middle school culture, and then one high school, which is something else, as many of you know. So my recommendation is that we would have three teacher leaders who are dedicated to the idea of the turnaround and have experience there. And we have those in the, our population. And then three administrative leader persons who also are dedicated to the turnaround for each, whatever entity they come from. I know that they can't be part of the committee, but my suggestion would be that they are non-voting parts of the committee if it's so constituted that reports directly to the three members of the school committee who would be part of the actual voting members of the committee. So that expertise from teachers and administrators would be at the use of the school committee members, be able to react in real time to the candidates and also make recommendations to those three members for inclusion in the general discussion. I also would recommend that the current superintendent oversee the selection of those members on behalf of the school committee.
Thank you. The selection of the people in the subcommittee really falls under the chair of the school committee. You say it all.
Mr. Mayor, did we need to approve the, I'm just going by the agenda. Did we need to approve the job posting first?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want, do you want to go into that so the public can understand what we're posting?
So there were a number of things, again, that were discussed at that meeting. The first was that there were some changes made to the job posting at a couple different meetings. So I believe the final version is what was posted as part of the packet. I'm sorry, I keep looking at you, Billy Joe, I apologize. But I would make a motion that we accept that as our final...
Before we do, can anybody read this off so the people who are watching this program?
Well, it's three pages, I think.
Are the gist of, you know, the heart of it, just...
I don't have a copy of it in front of me, so I don't know if anyone... Ms. Turner?
Actually, if we vote on the current job description, it won't have your changed salary. So we have to update the salary now that you've changed the range.
Has there been any significant change to this posting that would warrant specific information to be given out to the public? Madam Superintendent, could you?
Do you want me to just review?
If you can, just review in general.
So some of the requirements are at least ten years of experience in education. Preferred candidate has five years of central office experience, either as a superintendent, deputy superintendent, or an assistant superintendent or equivalent. Has the licensure, of course. Minimum of a master's degree, preferably a doctorate. A preferred candidate has urban school experience, strong communication skills. And I think some of the other, the others items that are highlighted are the qualifications for the superintendent. I can attest to, number one, a willingness to devote his or her entire efforts to the administration of Lowell Public School System and an enthusiastic, creative person who's willing to look at things in a very different way. Knowledge of school finance, knowledge of finance resources, demonstrated experience with standard-based education, and ability to work with the schools committee, staff, community members, all the constituents. I think that's a really important piece. And to be able to work with all other members within the city manager's office, ability to stimulate parent and student involvement. Those are some of the key areas.
No, thank you. That at least gives our audience, you know, an idea of what we've been discussing. And we've already discussed the salary range. So if there's no further discussion, I need a motion to approve the superintendent's job posting and salary range.
So if we would make a motion to accept the job posting with the addition of the newly voted salary range and distribute that, make it public?
One second. Ms. Dakota? Roll call.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
All right. Next, you had, and the report is to approve the members of the Blue Ribbon Committee?
Could I, Mr. Mayor, just before we move on to that, I just had one quick question regarding the actual posting. I know we had discussed at the subcommittee meeting forwarding all the updated information about the district to Mr. Kuchar so they could update that four-page promotional piece. Have we, if we haven't done that yet, could we get that information? I believe they can, did he leave yet? No. There you go. Thank you, Glenn. So we'd be able to forward that information? And my understanding is that that's an easy update? Okay. I know the full committee had seen that piece. I thought it was, I think it's a solid piece that presents our district well. I don't know if anyone had any recommendations for changes, but from my perspective, it was just to give them the updated information.
Okay. Ms. Doherty?
Well, some of the things that I wanted to see updated was our great stats around dropout rates, our attendance rates, like how, as an urban district, we compare with the state on some of these key factors. And I think that that really, any of those areas that's been, even with our test scores, schools that have shown huge improvement, just to highlight some of the factors that really make us an excellent urban school system so that people know... You know, there's, obviously, this challenges working for an urban school district. But I think we have been a district on the move for a while. So I want to get that story out there. Thank you.
All right. What we do need is an outline of what's been recommended by the subcommittee. If you can do that, Ms. Martin?
In terms of that promotional piece?
No, I'm sorry, the positions that you're seeking on this subcommittee.
Oh, on the Blue Ribbon, okay. So we're all set with the ad? We don't have to approve that? I don't know if we had to approve that or not? Yeah. Okay, so we're all set on that? Okay, then absolutely, we can go on to the Blue Ribbon. No problem. So we did have a conversation at the subcommittee where we did kind of go through our initial population of the school, of the Blue Ribbon Screening Committee. I can read that off now. It is included in the minutes, which hopefully people have. And then the job for the committee tonight is to make and discuss any recommendations for changes and then be able to finalize this so we can move forward. So as it stood from the Personnel Subcommittee last week, there were two UTL members, a representative from the university, UMass Lowell, a representative from Middlesex Community College, a member of the Principals Association, three parents, one from elementary, one from middle, one from high school, one member from the general community that could submit a letter of interest to the committee, and the committee would then pick who that representative will be, one representative from the LSAA Union, one from the Clerks Union, three members of the school committee, one from the Cambodian Mutual Assistance Association, one from African Community Group. We're hoping the Citywide Parent Council can help us determine that. And then one from the Latino community. And I had referenced, I know at the meeting, that CBA has a group that is currently active and working in the acre. So that was what the subcommittee had recommended putting forward to the full committee. And at this point, we could, any questions, concerns, or additions?
I had asked for a recommendation to also include the Lowell Plan, which is a business part. The Lowell Plan, every bank president in Lowell is part of that. Every major building owner in the city is part of that. And they can select anyone from that group to be represent. I think it's important. But most of our tax rate comes from that area. That's my recommendation.
I think if you would like to make that in the form of a motion, I'd be happy to second it, to add a representative from the Lowell Plan. I should also note that one of the opinions expressed during the meeting was our hope that we would be having new individuals from all of the different constituencies, perhaps having the opportunity to have some new voices as part of the conversation.
But they, Lowell Plan could also, they have dozens of people, literally.
No, which is fine. It wasn't specific to that. It was about the full listing.
Well, we need a vote to, do we need a vote to put that in? Motion? Yes. We had the motion, but Mr. Dakota?
Just gonna... To, in deference to my colleague, Mr. DeLosa's opinion that we should have a teacher from every level, I concur with that. So I will retract my name from being on that subcommittee. And I don't even know if I was gonna be on it myself, but I think we can, we as a...
That was a recommendation I had made also, if you recall. Ms. Martin had brought in, I believe every grade level should be represented.
Hey, Glenn?
If we go motion by motion, or do you want to throw all, do it all at once?
Let's do, let's do the Lowell Plan by one.
Okay.
Except the Lowell Plan. The motion's been made and seconded. A roll call?
Mr. Lay?
No.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
No.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
No.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
No.
Three yeas, four nay, motion fails.
Okay. Next is the idea of putting three. You made a motion. Are you making a motion?
That we do increase the number of teachers, that we have three teachers, one from each level.
I need a second? Maybe Mr. Lay? Roll call? I'm sorry, Ms. Martin?
So would then we be looking at having basically four UTL members? One representative from UTL and then three teachers?
Every teacher's a UTL member. We don't escape that, but the thing is, the issue is...
Well, I thought, originally was what, two UTL members?
Yep.
So if a third teacher would make it the three UTLs, right?
Would make it four. So we'd have, so we had...
You want each level, you want to issue each level?
The only teachers that were represented were the UTL members. So I'm saying, would we want to say that there would be one position for the leadership of UTL and then three teacher positions?
No.
No? Okay, I'm sorry, then I'm misunderstanding. What is it you'd like?
I think...
Hold it, the chair, Mr.?
I think Mr. Dakota wants to rephrase it from two UTL members, which we had said could come from anywhere. Did you want to now specify that to a UTL representative from the...
Each level.
Each elementary, middle, and... So that would eliminate the union leadership. I would just propose, again, my feeling was, let the UTL pick two UTL people and let them decide who they want on.
All right. Did Mr. Dakota have a second on putting three people? Mr. Lay, I'm sorry. No, Mr. Dakota.
And I second it.
Was there a second? Mr. Lay, I'm sorry. All right, let's vote.
I'm sorry, so if I could...
Yes.
Okay.
No, I was just gonna say, I mean, I think, I like the idea of having an elementary, middle, and a high school teacher on there. I think that's a great idea. But I also think the, I mean, the head of the union is gonna be part of this process too. And, I mean, so to my mind, if we can just make that four with the instruction that the teacher representation comes from each one of those levels, I think we then accomplish having those three different voices.
Accept that as an amendment?
I would agree with that. I mean, if it comes down to that, I think that they are the biggest...
Yes.
Element in our whole system. So I think they need to have that kind of representation.
Mr. Lay, do you accept that? Would you continue to second that? So that includes the three teachers plus the president of the union?
And LSAA still in it?
Yeah.
No? So we have five total?
No, it'd be four.
Four. Okay.
Because the LSAA is separate.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Okay, Ms. Nutter?
Why don't we just allow the UTL to just pick this whole group and take it out of the school committee altogether? I mean, we've done, I've been watching this for years, okay, and it's always the same thing. The UTL has people that they want on that committee, and the same people serve, I mean, we have a job as a school committee to select a superintendent. I know we have to come up and try to have as many, you know, play nice and invite as many people on, but at the same time, we're trying to keep this into a reasonable amount. I think having two UTL representatives and letting them choose whoever they want, the same way with letting LSAA and clerks choose whoever they want, or we should just give up our power and say, you know what, let the UTL run this whole thing, and we'll pick from whoever they send us.
All right, the motion on the floor, which I agree with, what we're talking about is, it's important to have a teacher at each level, that's, I believe in that. Both of us have been educators, we believe that elementary has a different position than middle school and high school, and the union head most certainly should be part of the issue. So this is not playing games, as far as I'm concerned, this is a time where we can get as much opinion from everybody as we possibly can. And I think, I don't like the idea of thinking of limiting, 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 when in fact, we should try to obtain as much information as we possibly can. So I'm going to move the question, roll call. Yes or no?
Ms. Dela?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
No.
Mayor Samaris?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
No.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Five yeas, two nays, motion approved.
Okay, one of the issues, my own opinion, this is just my own opinion, when we talk about school committee involvement, but I've dealt with a number of Blue Ribbon Committees basically over the past forty years, and basically, none of the Blue Ribbon Committees, especially in the superintendent's search, were members of the school committee. I just think that as school committee members, you can be an intimidating force in that group, and I think the group should be just representative of the community, because as school committee members, we do make the final choice. I mean, the Blue Ribbon Commission can select five out of ten, say, and the school committee could say, we want all ten, after it's said and done. But that's just my own belief, I'm just throwing that out as a position, that I will not vote for the Blue Ribbon Committee with the school committee as part of it. That's my own belief. Ms. Dela, Mr. Dakota, then Mr. Nutter?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. While we're at it, when we met last week at the Personnel Subcommittee, I did not believe that school committee should be part of the Blue Ribbon Committee, and I don't think it ever has been, a school committee member being part of the Blue Ribbon Committee. So my thought was, either all of us should be in, or none of us should be in. So I did not want to be part of it, because I don't think any one of us should be part of it. But if we were to have school committee member be part of it, I want to be part of it also. So when you asked me last week whether I want to be in it or not, I said no, because I don't think that we should be in it. But if we select three school committee to be part of it, I want to be part, I want to be considered also. Thank you.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that we should be allowed to attend the meetings, I don't think we don't have, we can't be participat, participants, but I think if we can be in attendance, I would like to see that process as it works, as it works out with the Blue Ribbon Committee. I think we should be allowed to at least sit there and listen and watch.
I also have issues with that, but Mr. Kucha, could you come up to the microphone? Is that a common practice that Mr. Dakota has stated? If, in other words, if the school committee is not an official part of that group, can they walk into an executive session of the committee doing the screening to observe?
I believe they may not.
That's my thought.
And that's based on the decisions that we have of the Attorney General, who interprets the open meeting law, based on how this stuff works.
Yeah. Andy, I understand what you're, Mr. Dakota, I understand what you're saying, but I'm just-
So could we alter that to three members rotating around for each of those meetings? So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a quorum?
No, because you'd have to, the search committee would have, the initial screening and interview committee would have to be appointed. Once it's appointed, they're the committee, and they're the people with the temporary jurisdiction. So if you were to resign from that committee and be replaced by somebody else, who would not be coming back to the school committee, because that would create a serial communication amongst the four of you, you might be able to do that, but you'd have to not come back to the school committee in order to make that possible.
You could have, I mean, you talked about having three, I mean, at this point, like I said, I disagree with it, but if the committee as a whole wants the three, I'll accept the three. So it's either you're in it, or you're not. Okay, Mr. Nutter?
Well, Mr. Kucha is still up. In your experience, isn't it, I mean, I did a little research, and a lot of the communities that I find who are presently doing a superintendent's search have school committee members on the search committee. Isn't that more common than not?
It is more common than not, but it is not, neither is unusual.
Mr. Mayor, I know you pointed out that we've always done it this way, which is a creed that should replace "I is a handmade of human good," because that's what Lowell runs on in this city. We've always done it that way. Well, we've always done maintenance the same way too, and look how good we're doing there.
Stop yelling. What, I mean, what does that, are you going to bully me off the-
I'm just raising my voice because I'm frustrated.
No, you're raising your voice in an attempt to bully.
I'm frustrated.
Well, I'm frustrated also.
You mentioned intimidation, that you thought school committee members on the board, who's more intimidating than the UTL president?
You know, I don't want to, we're not going to get into this. I mean, that, I mean, we start this, this-
I just don't think we should do it because we've always done it the same way.
All I'm, and when I say it's been done, you use history, I use history, you use another approach, but it doesn't make what I have to say any worse than anybody else's. Your approach is, okay, you have your belief, I have my belief. I believe in this committee, we should be able to discuss in a reasonable fashion, and both of us should be able to have an opinion that's different without an attempt of trying to intimidate the other person. That's what I see.
I wasn't intimidating, I was speaking in a clear and loud voice.
I know the difference.
Listen to Saturday mornings, you hear the same thing.
I know the difference. I know the difference. Mr. Hoi?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. It looks like, Mr. Kucha, like I told you prior to the meeting, I read all your literature since our last meeting with you, and I thought you did a bang-up job on this, and you also have a Plan B in case we're unsuccessful. And there's comments like you have here in this one paragraph on page two. In addition, should the school committee elect to conduct its own search, you'll still be with us to help us out. And one other thing, and I'll get off this, I know you're going to do most of the legwork, but I'm someone that believes the whole school committee should be the Blue Ribbon Committee. I'm not a big fan of the Blue Ribbon Committee, but it looks like it's going to go through, and they have the votes to do that. So with that said, I would like to make a motion that I move that the school committee, I move that we all have one pick, school committee members of someone we can put on this Blue Ribbon Committee. That's what I want.
That was done on the previous, actually, the last, the last two previous school committees, where the school committee just chose someone to represent them, okay? But the vote on the floor right now is to accept having three members of the school committee on the present Blue Ribbon Committee as stated. So we have to vote?
Good, thanks, Mayor, I didn't know that was the vote. Right now, then, I agree with it, I think we should have three members on it. I think, that's just my opinion, so I wanted to give it before we vote.
That's fine, I'm just, that's what we have on the floor.
Okay.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to say that I think that in a perfect world, to me, the ideal would be to have a screening committee, have them be part of the process, and for us to have access to all the applicants. But my understanding is, the only way that we can all see all the applicants is if we have a completely, completely open process from the beginning, and I think that will severely limit our candidates, if they don't have that part that is confidential until they move to the final stage. So given that, I think that we should have three members of the school committee as part of the search committee, just to, for that, the professional piece of membership from this board, who are getting to see all the candidates, and being part of that collaborative process with our community. I also think it makes sense to go through the process as we are now with making up that screening committee, looking at the different constituents in the city, and having people be at the table, whether it's our teachers, or community members, parents. I think that's an important way to approach it, just wanted to, so I would be in favor of school committee members on the screening committee.
The motion, the motion, or the work that had been done, was to have three members of the school committee. Ms. Dela?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just have a question. If we have three members as part of the Blue Ribbon Committee, is there any way we, school committee, can update each other? Is that against the law, or can we?
Repeat that, please.
Can we have an executive meeting where all three members from the Blue Ribbon Committee come together, where seven of us keep ourselves updated, would that be?
That becomes a muddied process. Mr. Kucha, I don't, you know, I mean, we can call for an executive session as a group to receive an updated information, but the thing is-
Under the, under the open meeting law, you could all come together to discuss the character and reputation, or physical and mental health of the candidates. Now, character and reputation is a pretty broad term, so at some point, you might be able to have access to some of the references that refer to character and reputation. But otherwise, during the process itself, that information is not accessible to anyone other than the initial screening and interview committee, under the Attorney General's interpretation.
Yeah, just for me, I don't see why the school committee don't see who's applying, you know, somehow we only know after so many members already.
In other words, once it's over, if there's ten, say they interview ten candidates, and they present you with five, but if it was the school committee's wish to see all ten, you have the right then afterwards to see the-
Right, but I rather see, I mean, for me, I thought, I mean, I wish the school committee can see all the applicants, not just, not just those that are being presented for interview. What if those, you know, for me, I just feel that we should see.
Well, we can discuss, I mean, let's put it this way, in the city council, if we've gone after a city manager, we have not had a Blue Ribbon Commission, and the council gets access to all that.
Exactly, exactly. Could we do the same, though, so?
Right now, but the thing, but in education, we've used over the years, is part of the history in many communities, is to have a Blue Ribbon Committee to get as much parent input, community input, because the superintendency deals with our children, you know, and it's been a common practice to have as much information as possible.
Right, so if-
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
But, Mr. Kucha, can you help?
If the city council could see all the applicants, why couldn't the school committee see all the applicants?
The Attorney General has opined that the exemption to the open meeting law that allows the initial screening and interview committee to convene an executive session is not applicable to the school committee as a majority body. Now, quite frankly, and I hate to offer this excuse, that was not my interpretation of what the legislature had done, but the legislature gave the Attorney General the authority to interpret the open meeting law, and this is the way the Attorney General's office, under the current and former Attorney General, has interpreted the open meeting law. A majority of the school committee is not entitled to have the executive session process during the initial screening and interview period. And it's, I'm sorry to just, I'm sorry to have to say, the Attorney General has issued this, this principle of how you operate, and I am powerless to advise you otherwise.
Okay, Ms. Dela?
Thank you.
Ms. She is, go ahead.
So that's regardless of if we use a Blue Ribbon Screening or not?
That is correct. You could, you could all join the Blue Ribbon Committee, but the committee could never convene an executive session or interview the candidates in confidence. You see?
I'm sorry, repeat that again?
Okay. The entire school committee could serve on the screening committee, or the search committee, but the search committee would not be able to accept applications in confidence, would not be able to screen them in confidence, and would not be able to do an initial interview in confidence. And if you can't offer candidates at least an initial confidential process, they will be unlikely to apply. Remember, there are lots of people in Lowell who want to help you with your search, whether you like it or not. Some of them represent the press, whose constituency is the First Amendment, and the press can ask questions that you can't ask. So you expose candidates to some of the subjects that the media might wish to identify, that the employer is not entitled to identify. Things like, you know, race, marital status, sexual orientation, ownership or rental of your home, and some questions related to any interaction with the criminal justice system. It's just, the executive session process is important to getting candidates.
Ms. Dougherty, then?
I just want to clarify something that the mayor said, though. So if we get, let's say, five finalists brought forward from the screening committee, and we then want to see other candidates, it would be the same situation. We can't see the other candidates.
If you wanted to see other candidates, under those circumstances-
That had applied, but were not moved forward by the screening committee.
The search committees have, in other places, directed whoever is running the search, to ask other candidates if they would be willing to reengage in the process, and become a public candidate for the public round. Remember, the search committee advises the school committee. You're free to accept or not accept their recommendations. So if they gave you candidates A, B, C, D, and E, and you didn't even want to bother with E, you could exclude E. Now-
I think the concern is that there'll be candidates we don't know about, right, that don't get moved forward.
That is a regrettable outcome of complying with the open meeting law and the way it's interpreted. Okay, Mr. Hoi?
Thank you, Mayor. Then my concern is, would three people, three from the school committee, you said, I believe you said is okay?
Yes, because it's not a majority.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Martin?
I think more, you know, as we kind of just discussed the way this works, I mean, there are a lot of, obviously, subtle kind of legal nuances, but the process as we've presented it meets all the requirements of open meeting law. The downside is that we do not get, the committee would get the recommendations from the screening committee, and would not have a complete listing of every applicant, but the screening committee would see every applicant. So we've eliminated any kind of bottleneck that would happen in terms of people applying and not making it to the screening committee. So everybody who applies would go right to the screening committee, the screening committee would then go through their process. Generally, you know, I would recommend that the committee would basically lay out the criteria of, we would be looking for the screening committee to give us their, you know, top seven, five candidates, what, you know, we can pick a number, and then that would be brought forward to the committee, and then those applicants all become public. Every step of that process falls within the legal limits of open meeting law. It also serves the purpose of giving people some professional courtesy, in that simply by applying for the position, they don't necessarily have their names put out there in the public, which I think is, which I think is appropriate, because I just think it's very difficult for people to, from another district or from wherever, to apply for a job, and then they may not even get two steps into the process, but their name is suddenly out there in the public. So I think that that process, as we've defined it, meets all the criteria, gives the professional courtesy to our applicants, which I do think will increase our applicant pool, and then provides the committee with, again, top five, top seven from the screening committee, which is, you know, I think, again, we can discuss the number, but gives us a solid number of top-tier candidates, so that we can then exert our process. And our process is just as exacting, we are doing the same, we are interviewing every candidate, we're looking at, you know, generally, an hour-long interview for this committee with each- each finalist. We are looking at extensive paper and, and recommendations and all of the, the materials that come in as part of that application, and where we have access to site visits, which I have always found to be incredibly useful, when we have the opportunity to go out to other districts to kind of get to know who the, who the candidates are. To my way of thinking, I, I really do believe that the Blue Ribbon Commission serves a very real purpose for us. I think that if we are going to stand here as members of the school committee and say that our community is important, that representation from our community is important, that we value what our parents say, what our teachers say, what our businesses say, if we sit here and say that those are important constituencies for us, and we expect them to be part of our school community, then we need to value them and respect them enough that we give them a voice in this process. So I have always found the Blue Ribbon Screening Committee to be exceptionally helpful. And, and I really do believe that it is, it's been, it serves a very real purpose in giving a voice to a number of different constituencies that we need to value as we go through this process. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Nada?
You know, one of the big issues that has hit this committee about this Blue Ribbon Committee is that there have been charges and accusations made that the last time this process was run, ten or eleven or twelve candidates were mysteriously cut. Nobody knew why. Nobody knew why they weren't forwarded. Nobody knew anything. The UTL president has, has said that publicly on a number of occasions. So that's why I think it's important that the school committee have representation. You talk about constituents, we are a constituent. We were elected by the majority of the people who went out and voted. The six of us made the cut. We have a large constituency who elected us to represent them. And so we should be represented just as much as the UTL, just as much as the LSAA, just as much as anybody else, because we were elected by a large majority of constituents to represent them. And our voices just as important as anybody else's.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, roll call on the motion. And the, and the roll call on the motion, Ms. Martin, is all of the candidates, every, you want to just review it quickly?
I don't even know where we're at right now. I believe we were on the...
What we've decided, what this group has decided to have representing.
I think the current motion was regarding having three members from the school committee on the Blue Ribbon Committee.
Right.
I think that was the current motion that was under debate.
Along with, we've all, we've accepted the idea of the teachers. No, that...
I think we already voted on that one, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The CMA, you haven't...
That was already on there. Oh, CMA, yep, they're already on there.
All right, so this is...
These are just changes. Like, this is the starting point.
This is to include, this is the final aspect, to include the three members of the school committee to this Blue Ribbon Commission.
Yes.
And we had a second on that, correct? We had a second? A second by Mr. Hoi, okay.
I, um...
Roll call.
Mayor, I still have one more thing that I wanted to tell you.
This is just on the school committee members, though.
Okay, so we, later, okay, okay, all right. Thank you, thank you.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Lay?
What we want to on again?
This is just, it's okay, just to do the three members of the school committee.
Okay, yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nada?
Yes.
Mayor Samaris?
No.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Six yeas, one nay, approved.
Okay. You had a question, Mr. Lay?
Okay. In regards to a representative from CMAA, I feel that the Cambodian community in Lowell is more than just CMAA. So if we want to have a representative from the Cambodian community, I don't want to specifically say from CMAA, let, let the Cambodian decide, I suppose, because there are more than one organization in, in Lowell, and we should not exclude them.
Okay. But the chair will make some final decisions. But in regard to the members of the school committee, the chair will make a decision at this point, just regarding the school committee, to keep in line with what I've used as an approach, for example, on all financial matters of subcommittee in finance, there are two issues right now that are very important to the city, finance and personnel. The subcommittee will carries on that role. I believe the members of the subcommittee on personnel should represent, there are three members, and that would be Ms. Martin, Ms. Doherty, and Mr. Hoi would represent us on the school committee.
So rather than saying from the CMAA, I would just...
No, no, I'm talking about the school committee, this is a separate issue. But the, regarding the CMA, but the thing is, the final questioning will be my selection, and I will come back to this group to get approval from this group. In other words, as to who will, you want, you're, you have a concern about the Cambodian community, the entire group might have a concern about who we select. Do you follow what I'm saying?
Um...
We're going to give the, we're going to give the opportunity, we're going to give the opportunity to the Cambodian community.
Yeah.
That's going to go out there. The suggestion has been used, the CMA, which is a, a strong representative of the Cambodian community. And there are people who differ, and I understand some of the politics that goes on, but the thing is, we will ask the Cambodian community for a representative. Okay? It will come through my office. I will make the selection, and then bring it before this school, school committee for final approval.
Um, Mayor, I, I disagree with, with that approach.
Are you saying we can't use the CMA at all?
No, I, I get along with CMAA very well, sir. By the way, I go to CMA every week, by the way.
What, what's the issue?
But I just don't want to leave out the other organizations.
I've said, that's fine.
But maybe, maybe Mayor makes a suggestion.
Sure.
Maybe CMAA host a, a, an event to select a person to represent, rather than having CMAA from someone from CMAA to represent.
That's a good idea.
Thank you.
I mean, that's something that would, that could work. I mean, that's what we, in other words, it's very difficult to go into various communities and say, who is the representative?
Right.
What we try to do is use those organizations which have been most successful. But the thing is, as you know, most organizations do not speak for everyone. They speak for certain groups or what have you. The CMA does its best to represent the Cambodian community. But what you're saying is, there are other groups that represent the community, and I will talk, in fact, after leaving this meeting, I'm going to a board, I'm on the Board of Directors of the CMA, and make that as a recommendation. Is that okay with you?
Yes.
To, to entertain too much input as we possibly can as to who will represent the community?
I will, I will, I will make that known also.
You can be part of that, too.
I will, yes, I will.
Okay. Mr. Dakota?
Somewhat unrelated question, but do we have to also select a chairperson for the Blue Ribbon Subcommittee, for the Blue Ribbon Committee? Do we need to select someone to be there?
That's, the, give me a couple, give me some time to discuss this. I'll discuss what this, I'll talk to all of you as individuals and what have you, and this will be for the next meeting. It's not necessary right now.
You're not talking into the microphone again.
I'm sorry. Damn me, shut off. Maybe that's the best thing. No, I'll try to get as much information from everybody as I possibly can as to who should be the chair. I mean, a natural thing would be to appoint Ms. Martin, as she's the subcommittee chair, and that would make, based on what this committee has stated as to they want committee input, the most logical choice. But let's get the committee together, and anybody has further thoughts on this matter, I'll entertain those thoughts. Yes, I'm sorry. I'll come back to you.
I'm going to let it go, thank you.
Just in terms of kind of how we move forward with these three representative positions, I, I think it would make sense to make them all consistent. So I, I think if we want to look at one representative from the Cambodian community, one representative from the African community, one representative from the Latino community, giving no assignation to the actual group, so not CBA, not, not CMAA, and then if your office is conducting the, basically, the search for those three positions...
I, I felt that it would fall into this office, but...
Which is fine.
But one of the groups that we, we can do, for example, in the Latino community, where we have the flag raisings of many different countries, you know, whether it's Puerto Rico, Dominican Republic, you know, those type of things, we will send that information out to all of those group leaders. We'll do that. James, my secretary, is here, but those are the things that we'll send out as soon as possible, get as much input as to who would like to be part of this community.
I just think structurally, you might find it, you might find it helpful if you ask people to apply, kind of the same way we're doing the general community, where it's people should send a letter of interest to the mayor's office.
That's...
If you could do that across the board, people can offer to represent whatever community they, you know...
We're going to try to get, in other words, whatever presentation we make to you, it'll have to have some logic behind it.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Dakota?
Just to come back to the chairman of the Blue Ribbon.
Yeah.
Can I suggest that, once the Blue Ribbon Committee is formed, that they be allowed to elect a chairperson amongst themselves?
We've done it that, we've done it that, it's been both ways. It's been chosen by the mayor, or it's been allowed the Blue Ribbon Committee. So I'm going to just do a little more research and...
I don't know, is anybody, can I, if that is a motion, that the Blue Ribbon Committee...
That is a motion.
Be, once it's formed, that it, it elects its chairperson?
A second to that?
Second.
May Ms. Martin? Roll call?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nada?
Yes.
Mayor Samaris?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Okay, I'm fine with that. Thank you. Next, we have to approve, we have, we have the approval of the Blue Ribbon Committee. Next is the motion to approve the focus groups, timeline, sample survey.
Ms. Mayor, the superintendent had her hand up.
I'm sorry.
I just had a, a question and clarification. I know I'm not a participating member on this, but I did, I just wanted to make sure that we were providing equity. So when I looked at it, and I wasn't at the meeting, but when I looked at it, and I see that now we're going to have four UTL members, one of them being the lead of the UTL, and we'll have one LSAA union person, and it sounds like that would be the lead, the president, but should we have an administrator? And I think that speaks to Mr. Delos's point, and it's just a equity piece that I was looking at.
Well, there is a member of the principal association, so there would be a principal on...
But the principal isn't a member of the LSAA.
No, but you, so we'd be looking at, like, a central office?
We, we also have, we have district-wide folks, we have people at school levels who are members of the LSAA, social workers, department heads, guidance counselors, ETCs, et cetera, et cetera.
Any discussion on this?
At, at this point, what's another body or two? So I, I would, I would make, I would make the motion to add an additional, besides the LSAA president, and another LSAA representative.
A second. Mr. Hoi, roll call? Roll call?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. Yes, sorry.
I'm wondering if we shouldn't have somebody from central office represented, or somebody district-wide?
We just said the...
But LSAA isn't, that's not central office.
District-wide, it's just, they are central office personnel.
So if I could, Mr. Mayor, we'd be looking at having, in theory, the, the president of LSAA, and then an additional member of LSAA from a district-wide position, so that they'd be able to choose one individual from the union who works in a district-wide capacity, whether it be, you know, central or...
I, I know that we're really limited with spaces, so I'm just wondering if there's value in having somebody from central office who's part of this initial screening, because these are the people who are going to work most closely with the superintendent.
But, I mean, you know, if you're talking about deputies superintendent, I mean, we, I think we have a citywide representation. I mean, how many more administrators do you want?
Well, typically, when you have a, a team of hiring managers, the people who are going to work most closely with the candidates are the ones who are there, asking the questions and observing and having input. And we've kind of cut out the core team...
The principals are direct reports to the superintendent.
Excuse me, I, I just wanted to finish my point.
Okay.
We've kind of cut out the core team, they're not represented in this group. They have no representative, representation in the process at all. And I, I know I brought this up at the subcommittee meeting, that, you know, it's a small group, central office is only a small group of people, but they are the people who work most closely with the superintendent. And I, I do feel that their input is valuable.
Is there a second to that motion?
I mean, I, I get the point. I'm just thinking if we could just define it as a district-wide position, then the choice can be made, you know, I, so the, the choice could be made then by the, you know, by the union, who they want representing them. I mean, our assistant superintendents aren't part of LSAA. They're the, you know, they and the principals are basically the only, the only administrative positions that aren't. So if that's the point you're trying to get to, then that needs to be made specific. But if we wanted to just say a district-wide position, then there could be, whether it's from special ed or from, you know, there are a number of different positions at Central who could be part of this, but it's just a matter of how specific, you know, you want to get.
So, first of all, did you have a motion, Ms. Martin?
There's a motion, there's a motion on the floor right now to elect another LSAA representative. That would be a district-wide role. That's, I'm just speaking to, as we're adding, this is an area that I think would be important, but that is not the motion on the floor. I believe the motion is a district-wide LSAA.
Fine. Roll call.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nada?
Yes.
Mayor Samaris?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Okay. Ms. Martin, do you want to go into the focus group?
Mayor, just one last thing about the Blue Ribbon Committee. I know you, as mayor, get to pick a few more than we do, but are we going to get to pick one person?
No, that wasn't, that wasn't a decision made by this committee. So the thing is, the committees in the past, rather than put themselves on, all members of the committee selected a member of the community that would represent their views or their, what they felt their constituency. But that has not been approved of, unless this committee...
Well, that's what, I, I tried to bring a motion up that each member has a right to pick one person.
Yeah. You want to make that as a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second by Mr. Lay? Any discussion, Mr. Nada?
If, if we weren't going to have members of the school committee on there already, then I would think that would have worked, but we were having members of the school committee already being present, I don't think we need to add another six bodies to a fifteen-member, sixteen-member, seventeen-member board, whatever we're up to now.
Yeah, I, I just, I feel different, Mayor, than that. I just, I'm not for a Blue Ribbon Committee, so I, I think we should try to even it out, and we should all have a pick, Jerry. I know there's three of us that are going to be on there, and I was wishing they picked it a different way, but they pointed to me, I'm not going to refuse it. But I really do feel we should, if we're going to have that many numbers, might as well add six more. We're elected to the school board, the six of us, the mayor's appointed to it from the city council. He's getting a little bit extra when he mentioned the Lowell Plan.
No. We don't have that.
Okay, okay, but he's still going to get some extras. He's going to get people he can put on there, and we're elected, we're elected to the school board, and I think we should have the upper hand.
Mr. Dakota?
Could, could we just, could we slightly alter that, Mr. Hoi, to the three who are not going to be on the Blue Ribbon Committee, appoint someone?
Good idea.
So we'd only add six, we only had three.
I like that idea.
Trying to cut that number into control.
Make that your motion?
Yeah, make that motion. The three that weren't appointed to it, let them have one vote apiece.
And, would you second that, Ms.?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Any discussion on this matter? Mr. Lay?
Just have a question. Do, do school committee have a final vote on Hui, on, on the Blue Ribbon Committee? When it's all formed, do we come here again and vote to approve it?
When the entire, when the entire committee is selected, we will bring every name before the school committee for approval. the school committee for approval.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, all names. Ms. Doherty?
I think I just want to do a double check on what number we're up to. Are we at twenty now with, including the additional UTL, LSAA, and the three school committee members? I counted twenty, but I'm not sure if that's right. I'm sorry?
I think it's twenty-one.
You want to read it off? Can you read it off?
I, well, let's see. I mean, I'm I had four UTL, one of them being the president, one representative from UMass, one from Middle Sex Community College, one member of the principals' Association, three parent members, one member from the general community at large, two members from LSAA, one of them being district-wide capacity, one clerk, union rep, three members of the school committee, one member from the Cambodian community, one from the African community, one from the Latino community. Is that, and this, that's twenty, but then it said something about citywide parent council. Oh, is that just to help? To assist, okay.
So we have twenty members now.
But the, but the issue, I mean, for my own, from the podium, we have three members of the school committee, officially elected members of the school committee, now on this commission. The names before would have some representation. If you're going to say the three that are not represented, I'm also not represented because when you said I make choices, I'm not making choices. I'm going to be given the names from the LSA, I'm going to be given the names from the teacher, from the teachers' union. I'm going to be presented with names. So, I mean, I would look to have someone, but the thing is, I don't, wait a second, you're entitled, I'm not, doesn't work that way. But the issue, but, I mean, Jackie, doesn't go that way. Yes, no, that doesn't, but the question is, you have three members of the committee. I think now it's getting to a point where it gets beyond any ability to control, because then I will want a representative in that group. So that's four. The, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Hoi, but the thing is, we now have three members of this committee duly elected. You, as Mr. Nada said, you all have a constituency, you're right, you know, and you also have the final choice of who becomes superintendent. Draw that motion. Mr. Hoi?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Our Subcommittee on Personnel, I believe we said we were going to try to make sure that we don't have repeat people. I know it's not going to be possible, like the union leader, you're not going to get someone different, it's Paul Georges, but I think we should make a very good attempt to make sure anybody that was on it the last time shouldn't be on it this time, shouldn't be the same chair, and I think that's what you should be able to do a little bit better than us, Mayor, to make sure we don't have people that are always on it, someone different.
I understand the message.
And we talked about that.
I understand the message from the
As a whole school committee, we talked about that when you were here.
I understand that.
All right.
So back to your motion, do you, I mean, do you want the motion voted on?
Well, I wasn't sure about you. We're elected at a school committee, you're appointed to it, so I, I really, I'm not for you to get another pick. I think that
What other pick do I have?
You'll, you'll have plenty to say on this, Mayor. You're going to have plenty to say on this.
No more than either of the school committee members at this point.
Okay.
One vote for the superintendency, everybody here, there's seven votes here. Whoever gets four votes, names
Yeah, so we can add you, Mayor, for four. I go for that. I'll go for that. I want as many people on there to represent the school committee as possible. It's our vote, and you've been involved in the schools for a long time, so I could go for that.
Mr. Dakota?
You can't. I'm having second thoughts. The numbers are just going to become too staggering. I think we, we talked about this early on in this process, that we wanted to try to keep the numbers down to keep it under control, so to speak. If we go beyond twenty people now, and it, we're already at twenty, and that's not adding the three that we just talked about.
That's my point.
Or four, or four more.
And we have committee members now representing
And we have three members on there. So the ultimate vote is ours. We vote on whoever gets
That's correct.
Put to our, put in front of us, and so I, I think that we should be happy with that, I think, at this point.
So was there any second?
Yes, I will.
Are you withdrawing your second to the motion?
It wasn't me second.
Oh, you second, you still second this motion?
Yes.
Any further discussion?
I'm good.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Mr. Nada?
No.
Mayor Samaras?
No.
Mr. Dakota?
No.
Ms. Doherty?
No.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Two yeas, five nays, motion fails.
Okay. Back to Ms. Martin, your focus group timeline.
So I believe that that then would constitute the Blue Ribbon Screening Committee. The mayor would then bring back to us the final list of names at our, you could set that at our next
I mean, we'll try to expedite this as
Okay, as soon as possible.
Mr. Kuchar.
That would be great. Okay, so there's, that would be finalized.
For us, in other words, when you ask for letters, if you want letters, you know, that type of information as to what the applicants
To express their interest and, and why they'd like to be part of the process?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that should all be forwarded to the mayor's office, and then you can go through that process.
I think especially the minority committee wants to see that, you know, we've opened up as many avenues as we possibly can, as Mr. Lee stated.
That would be great. Absolutely. So then the only other thing, I believe, is the, setting the timeline, which should be another joyous process.
Do you have that timeline for the audience, or do you
Was it part of the package that had gone out? Okay.
A lot of these dates coincide with the Knowledge Bowl.
So it is in the minutes that I hope everybody has. So just to quickly go through this, we're talking about posting the finalized position that we did tonight. That will become official on March 4th to be distributed. We set April 2nd as the deadline for applications. The, at the close, so on April 2nd, we'd be looking to distribute all of the collected applications to the members of the screening committee. And then on April 8th, between April 2nd and April 8th will be the review of candidates. The Blue Ribbon Committee would be meeting on, was this the September, the April 8th date that you can't, okay.
We need to have an orientation date.
Okay.
Move that date up from April 2nd, where we get oriented.
So we're looking at March, what was it, March?
Did you want to keep it on Tuesdays?
I do think we should keep it on Tuesdays, so if we looked at March 26th as the first meeting date of the, of the Blue Ribbon Screening Committee, that would allow us to do orientation that night and to begin the, the development of the questions. Then everything is, the deadline for application is April 4th. The committee would receive all of the materials and have a week to review it. They would then meet on April 8th. Is that correct? To select the candidates? That's a Monday, though, so April 9th? To select the candidates? And then they'd be scheduling their interviews for the week of April 22nd. Our goal would be for them to bring the finalists to us, their final recommendations. Again, this committee will need to decide how many on, on May 1st, but we would have the opportunity to give it an extra week if we needed to, but I would like to at least set as a goal for May 1st.
The thing with May 1st, that's when we have our budget, is presented to us on May 1st. I don't know if that conflicts or not, and I think
And the 22nd is, is school vacation.
May twen, I'm sorry, April 22nd?
April 22nd.
Is that school vacation week?
April vacation.
It is not school vacation week.
April 14th.
It's the week before?
The week before.
The 15th.
Oh, the week before?
You have, you have a school committee meeting, April 3rd and April 10th. Do you want to change, now, the 10th was added because you no longer had the April 17th date, but do you want to do the April, do you want to change the 10th to the 24th? Because that will be right in the midst of everything that's going on in case
No, I, the interviews, it's the Blue Ribbon Committee interviews, so it doesn't impact that
It doesn't, but the thing is, if there's a requirement of the committee to be able to meet, to answer any questions or deal with any issues.
Well, if we were looking at the, so the week of the 22nd, are we saying that, is that April vacation?
No, it's the week before, sorry.
The week before is April vacation?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so that would give the Blue Ribbon Committee the opportunity to interview that full week of the 22nd. Was there a problem with that? So then, again, looking at May 1st, for them to deliver to us the, the finalists. And even if that's the same day as the budget, so be it. I mean, yeah, that's fine. And then we'd have the, that following week ending on the, or beginning, I guess, the May 13th to schedule all of our site visits, and then the committee itself would need to schedule a number of public meetings to do our public interviews with the finalists the week of May 13th.
Okay. That meet with the, any issues for anybody?
There should not.
Second the motion, if that's your motion, so I'll second it.
I thank you very much. And I would, if I could, request that we actually get this onto a document
Yes.
That correlates with an actual calendar, so if we could get that, include these dates, include the budget dates in all in one place, and if you'd like to include the Knowledge Bowl dates, there'll be some crossover with those, not as much, but some. Perhaps if we could get everything on one, one calendar page, that would be, I would find that extremely helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Nada?
And I think we talked last week that the dates that we have set, we need to make those dates, anyone who is going to be serving on the Blue Ribbon Committee has to agree to be available on all of those dates, so they know ahead of the time, you know, when they sign up for it, that you're committing to the
What they're in for.
Exactly.
So superintendent, we'll get that information, it'll be forwarded out to the school committee members?
Absolutely.
Can we just go through it one more time? I'm sorry, just to make sure that
That, if she could read it back, because that's where the official notes are going to come from.
I didn't even know, I didn't even know it was a mo Do you have the Subcommittee Minutes?
If the superintendent could share that with us, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, Jeanne, I have it too, so.
Go ahead, superintendent.
So the application deadline will post on 3/4/19. Application deadline, April 2nd. Distribution of applicants by the close of the day on April 2nd to all the committee.
Screening committee.
Screening committee, yes. Review of the candidates between April 2nd and April 8th. Selection of candidates by April 9th. Schedule interviews for the week of April 22nd. Bringing finalist names forward to the committee by May 1st. And site visits and interviews the week of May 13th. Deadline of May 31st to allow for a 60-day notice given to the current district nominating the candidate.
Two, two things. You didn't mention the orientation date, which is when the screening committee gets together and gets oriented and develops the questions, and I believe, Ms. Martin, it was Tuesday, March 26th?
Yep.
And when we talk about selecting the candidates, it's not by April 9th, it's going to be on April 9th. We're going to meet that night.
That's right, April 1st.
Okay, we said by April 9th. Okay, just so, so when people are interested in being on the screening committee, they know they have a meeting April 9th, which we're going to go over all the applicants and choose which ones to call back for interviews. Thank you.
Roll call.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nada?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
All right, you, next, you have the draft of the Human Resources Job Description. I need a motion to approve the chief
We voted on it.
Oh, we voted on that?
Yeah.
Okay. We did. Motion to adjourn? No? No, we don't have this on the
The MAS C contract? We already voted on that one.
At the April 13th meeting.
I believe it's coming forward in permission to enter at our next meeting, but we had already voted on it.
Yeah, motion to adjourn. Ms. Doherty, second by Mr. Nada. Dakota?
Are you around Saturday morning?